We're going to call it Dunbar Arts on the Common for Thursday, March 21st. We are now officially in spring, so we're going to go stealth tonight. All three segments present, town administrator, recording secretary, and Mr. Leo Martell recorded for the public. Thank you, Leo. Okay, gentlemen, we have some minutes from last week?
Yeah, a motion to approve the regular reading for March 14th. Yeah, it was a 14th. March 14th, as amended because there's a few changes.
I'll second Bob's motion.
Okay, any further discussion? I thought the changes were just very minimal. And all in favor?
Aye.
Pass it down to secretary. So you heard the police department, when we walked in, one town is going from one police officer to no police officers. Seven hundred eighty people, one police officer. Interesting. Okay, I'm going to open up a public comment, and I remind everyone, just please state your name for the record. If you have anything valuable, we'll open to hearing. I'll start in the back row.
How about you?
Right, sir. You have any agenda, sir?
Yes. Tom Larson, 32 Boots View Drive.
Okay.
First of all, this Saturday at 10:00 a.m. out here, we're going to be taking the reefs off the cemetery along with the tripod stands and also all the cemeteries, so all volunteers are welcome. And it'll probably take maybe a half hour, forty-five minutes to get everything done. If you've got side cutters, bring those along. We're going to cut the boughs off so we can reuse them next year. The ones that aren't, we'll dispose of. And pick them up trucks are welcome, so we can take them right to the transfer station when we're done. Second, I just talked to Lorraine Allen, and General John Stark Day will be Monday, April the 8th. There'll be ceremonies on the common here at noon. And we'll have the New Hampshire Society of the American Revolutionary War, Sons of the Revolutionary War, Honor Guard firing a musket salute along with General John Stark.
April 8th, what time?
Ah.
Time?
Ah, noon.
What time?
Did you say April or May?
April. Yeah, they moved it back because some teacher wanted to make, so they could talk about it for their students, but nobody ever shows up, so... But it makes it kind of tough to really get everything scheduled. But there'll be reenactors here.
Is that the Patriots' Stadium, Boston, Massachusetts?
Well, they do it in Manchester at 10:00, at Stark Park. And then they come out here and for invited guests, while there's luncheon at Molly Stark House.
Okay. Thank you, Don.
Yep.
Enid Larson, 32 Boots View Drive. As one of the co-chairs of the Dunbar Arts on the Common, I just want to request permission that we can use the commons again for the festival. It'll be May 11th through 12th, 10:00 for both days. And last year, we had an interesting situation with the restrooms. So we've always used day septic in the last, and we've always done just two regular bathrooms because we were in the past allowed to use the restrooms here. And the regular bathrooms are just eighty dollars each, but the handicap is 265. So I would like to ask if we could go back to the way we were getting two regular ones at eighty dollars each, and then allowing, if handicap is necessary, to allow them to use the bathroom here. We don't find that there are that many or there's been that much usage. It's just, you know, nice to have it there. And the other thing that I'd like to request, if we can have access to the vestibule Saturday and Sunday morning from 7:00 till about 9:45, we set up free coffee and donuts for all of the vendors, and it's something they've come to really enjoy and expect at this time. And we're, you know, that's the only area that we're in, is right there. We set up a table and we've got the coffee pots.
Excuse me, are you speaking about the library vestibule?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so that's the library vestibule.
Correct.
And can you, just so I'm following it right, how much was the handicap?
The handicap is 265, and I've called several other places, and it goes as high as 285.
So 265 versus 80.
Versus 80, uh-huh. Any money that I can save goes toward what we turn over for the restoration project, so it's appreciated.
And that's on Arts on the Common?
Correct.
See, in the past, the thing is, we talk about the past, but the last, in the past, it was not open for handicap only. It was open to all the vendors, and I think that's wrong. And that's the thing I was objecting to previous year. It's one thing for handicap people, but when you open up to all the vendors, and you say, let's say you have fifty vendors, and say you have two times a day, and that's like using it 200 times, then I have to have employees available to come into work the following Monday to have it available for them, or they can't work. And that's an issue I have with the open up of the restrooms. And last year, it was, it did break. We had a... It broke, the toilet broke, and it had to be repaired the following Monday. And so I think it's unfair for town employees not to have a restroom available for them and all come in and have it in a solid condition. It's not fair to our town employees. So I'm looking out for our town employees, so I'm reluctant on that a little bit. I'm going to let my other fellow chairman come in. As far as you, go ahead.
One other thing I want, we're talking 265 versus 80, so 215 dollar difference. Is there any other source that we could maybe help fund them with to not open the building up? In other words, to help get that handicap? What are your guys' thoughts about that?
Well, the thing is, this is not a town funding activity. This is a private, this is a semi-profitization, although they do have profits with, they share the profits, some of the profits with the town restoration.
All the money goes to the town restoration.
After expenses. And so the thing is, there are many people who make money on the, all the vendors will make money.
Well, the vendors make money, but the co-chairs, us that run it, don't take a penny.
Okay, I understood.
Yeah, so all the profits and proceeds that...
Basically, it goes to you guys. Did $10,000 last year we gave to the town hall restoration.
Exactly, exactly. Okay, I understand that.
From that one weekend?
Yeah.
Yes.
That one sunny day.
Yeah, the one sunny day.
So, so back to my original thing, I was thinking, if we could maybe offset that or help with that handicap and not open the town up, it would probably make it more beneficial to the town than opening that up and replacing the toilet or whatnot. Have your comments?
Yeah, I think your idea, because, you know, there's also the one at the library. If you want to open up buildings, since having two buildings opened up, but maybe, maybe the cost of sharing the handicap accessible is probably a better alternative, because then none of the facilities are being used. So none of them are getting compromised.
None of them are getting compromised, and everything's outside, and it's safe.
You're not talking about a lot of money. I mean, if we split the cost with the handicap, you know, I think that would make it...
Okay, yeah, because I can see we normally pay eighty dollars for you as opposed to...
So she just needs one, so it'd be 215 additional dollars that they're coming up with. And I think that as a town, to not have that, you know, be jeopardized.
And if the toilet breaks, the cost of a plumber probably exceed the cost of investing in a handicap bathroom now.
So what I would like to do is maybe, I'd like to maybe, well, Leo's going to comment on it, maybe table it for a week and figure, so we can figure out what funds to maybe use it out of, and then we'll get back to you. Is that acceptable?
Okay, that's very, very agreeable, yeah. Thank you so much.
And Leo's going to comment on the same stuff.
Now, you have a comment? Yes.
It's a question.
Okay.
So are you looking for two bathrooms plus a handicap or a bathroom and handicap?
No, one standard and one handicap.
Oh, okay. I was just wondering if like we're elevating it.
Because if you pay, that'd be, yeah, yeah. Because one wasn't enough, Leo, they had spilled.
No, no, right, I understand.
We had asked them to get two, and now make one handicap be covered.
Yes.
But I would think if we can look with Lean this week and try and work out somewhere to fund that or help fund it, that's what I'd like to look at.
That would be great, thank you. And then it is okay to use just, I call it the vestibule. I'm not sure if that's the exact...
I think we agreed to that last.
No, that was a last minute request. I made up, I couldn't get a hold of you guys, so I...
That's why I'm asking way ahead now.
You're doing excellent. But I think we have consensus for the vestibule. And the thing is, what we'll do is issue the key. And the thing is, I got to make sure we block off, there's no security between the vestibule and the open library. I'm not going to have the library director come in.
I'll have it well...
Blocked.
Well blocked, trust me.
As we did last year.
Yeah, I'll plant him in front of it for good taste. No, I will be sure that that...
And now after, after the 9:45, you guys close that up and lock it?
Yes, we do, yeah.
Okay, great. And then I think, I think you use it in the evening to store some of your baskets.
Yes, I put all the raffle baskets in there as opposed to dragging all the way back home. Yeah, the less they get beat up, the better.
Which is fine. The only thing I ask is, as far as coordinations?
Police department.
You have to have a close coordination with the police department as far as what you would need for the support for that day, parking and traffic.
I already talked to, yeah, the chief. I did last week.
That's, that's an important coordination needs to be done.
Oh, yeah, very, yeah.
Well, thank you very much. We'll have, we'll have Lean get back to you with how we're going to look at where we're going to pull that money from.
Thank you very much. It's appreciated.
So consensus on the vestibule and the common?
I think we have consensus. That's exactly how they used it last year, and it worked out well. Okay, you were actually in public comment, but the thing is, you were the first one on the agenda, so it was perfect timing. It was perfect timing. No, that's not a problem.
Thank you.
But Linda, did you have anything to comment on you?
No, it's all these points.
All right. Any last items on Arts on the Common? Gentlemen, any other concerns you want to share before we move on to the next subject?
No, I think that the solution they thought of probably would work.
Okay. And I'm looking, you know, like they said, vendors do make money there, but all the money that's made by that committee goes to our town hall restoration, which is a huge amount of money to my...
Yep, totally agree.
Small amount of money to take care of that.
Okay, okay. Now, we had a great week this week. If you've driven by the library, we have the brand new sign, which we bought last year in the library, and some other signs are on town, and they look great. I understand that the cemetery trustees want to use the similar format and put new signs on the cemetery, and I think it's with encumbered funds already?
You've got some funds.
Yeah, we've got 1,800 encumbered.
What's nice is, it should be an ease of punch-up, that you can use the same template from the same company. And so the workmanship looked fantastic.
Yeah, I emailed the vendor, and I haven't heard back from him yet, but... Also looking at putting a sign, a new sign by the Cremains Gardens in both pages and here, so people really know what they are.
Now, the thing is, for the public, there was, the old sign, there's an old sign, the big huge library we raffled off because we were going to trash it last year, and there was some interest. There's a smaller library sign, there's two small library signs. One is going to be retained in the library, and the second one, they have, the library director has no use for. If anyone wants it, they can please submit their name to Lean, otherwise it's going to go in the trash. There's no historical value to that. Yes?
What we'd like to ask, if possible, you know, we have the raffle tent for Arts on the Common. If we could get, you know, my cemetery signs, the library signs, stuff like that, we'll put a, make it a silent auction type of thing, because there's going to be a lot of antique people coming around. And once again, it all comes back to the town, but that would be a good way to do it.
Gentlemen, do you have a consensus with that? Because we would end up trashing them anyways.
Okay, thank you.
But the thing is, there's only one sign that is going to be retained, but I think there's already two signs over there, and then if you would add the cemetery signs, you might have a good...
Yeah, my cemetery signs.
They won't fit in a basket, though.
I'll get a bigger basket.
Yeah, we have the, one of the signs in my office here.
Yeah, so you can just coordinate with Lean to pick them up if you're leisure.
Okay.
Then you make out, because if nobody bids on them, they're irresponsible.
I'll get one from my library.
Okay, and that's it on signs. Now, Linda, you are up. You want to talk about town appointments now?
We are. So to make it easy, this is a list of all of the appointment papers that I'll be giving you this evening. And Jen, I made you a list so that you don't have to guess at the names.
Thank you so much.
So here's the stack. You're on the list. If you want to sign the ones for Fred, Enid, and Don now, I can swear them in so they don't have to hang out.
Okay, that sounds like a plan.
And then I did want to... There's others besides the standard appointments, the little couple housekeeping items.
Just regarding the...
Tell me when to start talking.
Just regarding the one, the alternate to the...
Planning board.
Planning board. Donna revisited, gave me the RSA to follow, and she has, I can share with you a copy of the reference she made. It just has to be, he can be appointed alternate, it's got to be in a segments meeting.
Is it RSA 673 column 2? Because I didn't see the word alternate in that RSA.
Okay.
I'm waiting to hear from the Secretary of State on that, so if you'd like to sit that out until I get in the official...
We can do that, we can surely do that.
He's spending his time right now in a lot of legislative hearings, so it's a little harder to get.
The only thing is, we wanted to make sure that, the problem with the planning board, they have to meet on a monthly basis. They also have to, in order to have any business because they have to...
Yeah, right.
If I'm ill, and then one other member becomes ill, it's easy to lose a corner.
And I understand all of that. I just, I would rather get a...
We just want to do it by the book.
And that's why I want to hear from them. Another housekeeping item, you fellows shift through those things, is cemetery trustee. Last year, you appointed Judy Keith for a three-year term, and in going through the RSA's, I found that alternates for cemetery trustees are only appointed for a one-year term, not a three. So if you are in agreement, and I do have the statute here, if you'd like to see it, you can re-sign a paper for her for a one-year term.
Which, that's fine, for cemetery alternates.
Which committee were you talking about, for Enid and...
Town Hall Restoration.
I don't think you have them here. Do you have, if you take a look, I'm looking for Larson's.
It's, I think it's got them grouped together, doesn't it?
I did have, I did have them grouped together.
Yeah, they're on the circle page.
No, I'm looking for the paperwork.
Oh, the paperwork.
Any one of them that says theater restoration would have them.
Town Hall Restoration Committee, it's like close to the end.
Okay.
And then Fred was...
Dunbar Recreation Commission, the different one?
Yep.
I got it.
Fred, you were Town Forest? Yes. Fred was Town Forest.
Also, yeah.
And probably historical awareness for Fred.
Can we do them all at the same time?
Yes.
If the terms are the same, we do the same term.
There should be one for Fred Mullin and the...
Different term on this one?
Oh, you get some on the board next time.
No, that's a while together.
Fred is Town Forest and Historical Awareness.
How do you pronounce it?
Edith.
Enid.
The N.
Enid, uh-huh.
Enid, there we go. Okay, I'll make a motion for the following members to be appointed to the Dunbar Town Hall Restoration Committee for a term ending March 2020. Edith Larson, Donald J. Larson, Mary Sue Bracy, Clem T. Madden, Robert E. Martell, Kurt McDermott, Margaret Watkins, Shelley Westenberg. I'll second that. And any discussion on those, gentlemen?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm scribbling the subject here while I can.
Fair enough. I'm just going to do the... Fred's next.
Fred's next, right. And then when we're signing and approving the rest of them, I can take these folks out, swear them in, and come back and then just go over the rest of the housekeeping with you. Does that work?
Sounds like a plan. Sounds like a great plan.
I think we're all in that particular order. I think they were in...
They won't be now because they're getting fixed up.
Need to pick up over there.
As it comes across.
We'll give you time to fix them again.
Hey, well, maybe this is a long...
There you go.
Maybe we record it this way.
Fred's cut the bull. We do the first. Should be the manmaster.
Are you one, something to, no, you're not reappointed this year.
Not reappointed, no.
I'll make a motion for the following members to be appointed to the Town Forest Committee Fred J. Mullin and Ronald J. Larson.
Jen, 2022 is the term ending date, and I haven't...
I'll second that. Any discussion on those members? All in favor?
Aye.
Believe it or not, I can see it here at the same time.
Just give me courtesy.
Hey, we're fun now.
I know, I know. Okay, we have, who is an alternate? Fred is an alternate on the, going to be for the...
Historical awareness.
Awareness, alternate.
Is that a separate one or goes all?
Some of them, I just, historical awareness, but this one's an alternate.
I'll make a motion to appoint Fred J. Mullin, Frederick J. Mullin, as an alternate on the Historical Awareness Committee, term ending March 31st, 2020.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? The segments are going to be slightly a little bit different.
Okay, I'll make a motion for Robert E. Martell as a selectmen's rep to the Historical Awareness Committee, term ending March 2020.
I'll second that. Hearing any discussion?
That was a good...
You all in favor? All in favor? This is the final next. Damn, it's working as a team here.
At least we didn't go back and forth with the sign.
Hey, we're doing all right.
Let's see, these are all historical. Okay, I'll make a motion for the following members to be appointed to the Historical Awareness Committee, and the term is ending March 2021. Lyndon Nickerson, just won that year.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
I get this back.
We should double check the order.
No, it's correct. It's on our list that way. The other ones are...
Is she an alternate?
No.
They rotate. They rotate the years.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion for following members for the Historical Awareness Committee, term ending March 2022. Gail Martell and Donna Don.
I'll second that. Any discussion, gentlemen? All in favor?
Aye.
Lean, as they come back to you, you can use his papers over again, if you can, is okay?
They're a mess now, it's not long involved. She'll figure it out.
Give her back her paper, close to the lunch.
Okay, Dunbar Old Home Day Committee.
At least you can read your signature.
Like to make a motion to approve the following numbers of the Dunbar Old Home Day Committee, terms ending is March 2020. Tom Crisano, Kenneth C. Kerber, Mark Lang, Timothy Rapp, John Stevens.
Second. Any further discussion on this, gentlemen? Hearing none. All in favor?
I moved you back a little, Todd, like...
I noticed that. You're guessing.
There's enough room on my second one for me to scribble on to.
Just a point of order to the town clerk. As the, some of the committee members have, these have been approved by, all been vetted to the committee members.
Everything's gone through the...
The chair, the chairman, the chairs, yes.
Thank you. The chair, even the chair was, some of the committees don't really have a chair, so in that case, I just sent a glance out to the entire committee.
Pass the questions, while...
Exactly. Still signing. All right, so I'll talk while you're continuing to sign. Last year, when the overseer of welfare and the deputy overseer of welfare were appointed, it wasn't brought to me to generate appointment papers.
Okay.
So I know it's officially on the record that they were appointed, but if you folks, since it's the same board, wouldn't mind signing the papers that would have been submitted last year, so that we have a paper trail with the appointment papers. So this is dated, these are dated the day of your meeting last year when the official appointments were made.
So this, you signed bills already made?
And then when Jeannie, Jeannie signed, she's going to have to come take her oath, which should have been done last year.
So she's not an appointed employee?
There was a time when the overseer of welfare was elected from the floor, just like the hog reefs. Somewhere over the years, that changed. I think it changed before I became clerk. I could do a little research and see if there was any official making of the change, but she was the, they were always appointed from the floor at town meeting. Remember that, Leo?
Excuse me?
Yeah, it's true.
So she's not an employee. She's, they've always been, Depp Durel had it, Deb had one, a term ending, Margaret...
So how was the, how was the dollar's character, is it stipend or is it?
It's a stipend.
But it's subject to withholding.
Yeah, we're ready, Dave. Okay, you're set, Linda.
And I did give you a list of who I'm still waiting to hear from.
Correct.
So this is a good year, because I've gotten a quick response from just about, just about everybody. Something I would like to bring up, because it's...
Want to make a motion to appoint a...
Go ahead.
Go ahead. Now.
We really need to fine tune this process so things like this don't fall through the cracks. I would like to take some time and come up with a nice procedure. Maybe at some point, we can discuss it, because I would love your input on how we can better streamline this and fine tune it, so that we don't have, like, Jeannie last year, Jeannie Ann's, and fall through the cracks. Once we come up with a nice procedure, we'll distribute it to all of the committees, so that they know what to do in the case of a vacancy. Sometimes there are vacancies and I don't care about them, and that's not, that's not a good thing. There are other, I had a situation this year where I contacted the chair of a committee, and he said, oh, I already got asked that question two weeks ago by somebody else, and I already gave the answer. Well, I didn't know the question was asked, and I never saw the answer. So that, you know, and so we need to just come up with a better way of communicating it, so that we're all on the same page. If you folks are agreeing with that one paragraph, I will present it to you.
That sounds like a great idea.
Thank you.
I think we have consensus.
You can make all the motions you want.
I'll make a motion to appoint Robert E. Martell to the Energy Committee, term ending, ending March 2020. You'll have to second that one.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Aye.
All in favor?
Okay, I'll make a motion to appoint Robert A. Ray and George Holt to the Energy Committee.
Second that.
Term ending March 2022 for both.
Seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
You're making a guess, you took, you took one and then you took the other one away. It was a single one.
That's a single, doesn't go with those?
No, single one.
Bless you. I'll make a motion to appoint Lynn Como, Lynn Como as deputy tax collector. Term ending March twenty twenty-two.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Single one.
Make a motion to appoint Allison Valeries to the zoning board of adjustments. Terminating March thirty-first, twenty twenty-two.
I'll second that. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
No, I've signed it.
Recreation. All three from today.
Same time?
Same time.
Okay, I'll make a motion to appoint the following three members to the recreation commission. Heidi Wright, Deborah Marqu, and William Johnson. Term ending March twenty twenty.
I'll second that. Any further discussion, gentlemen? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Two separate ones, one deputy overseer.
I'll make a motion to appoint Jeannie and I have to tell her Zimgradi.
Zimgradsky.
Zim, Zimgradsky as overseer of welfare, terminating March twenty twenty.
I'll second that. All, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Bob?
Aye.
Is Allison's term the same?
March twenty twenty.
Twenty, where am I in here?
Yes, I'm sorry, yes.
That's okay.
Okay. I'll make a motion to appoint Allison Valeries as deputy overseer of welfare. Term ending March twenty twenty.
I'll second that. All in favor? Any further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
I said it already.
I know. You said that, that's good. Okay. I'll do the next. I'll do the next one.
Oh, you are?
Yes, because you're one of.
She, you mean a motion to.
They don't appoint you, they approve the appointment that Jeannie appoints you. So they might wanna reword that for the minutes so that Jim doesn't have to make a correction next week. The deputy tax collector is appointed by the tax collector and the appointment is approved by the board of selectmen. So you don't make the motion to appoint, you make the motion to approve the appointment.
Okay, let's do, clean, do housekeeping on that right now. So we have to just, we um.
Should have changed on White, Martin? It says to.
But she signed, she signed it.
Judy signed it.
Judy signed it, there's a subset, there's a subset, she assigned it already. So uh the most ones, we just approved Judy's uh. So.
Okay, make a motion to approve Lynn Como as deputy tax collector. Term ending March twenty twenty-second. And that will override our previous motion.
As appointed by.
As appointed by the.
I said.
No, you didn't, you didn't say that.
Yeah, we're not gonna be there. As appointed by Judith Valken.
He's thinking about the media or in my.
All in favor? Oh, I second that, and all in favor?
Aye.
Vin Calpin.
I wanna make sure the minute they go, you see what we did. Okay. In the last group, I can make a nomination to appoint Jonathan Wigan, Tanner Scoot, David Dahl, and Jeff Crosby to the highway safety committee, terminated in March twenty twenty. Can you second, gentlemen?
Second.
All, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Now, I add one more thing to housekeeping, sort of housekeeping, but not. Mill Foil Research Committee is a committee of one, and that's Bill Zeller. Maybe the board would wanna think about whether or not to keep that as a committee or to try to recruit new members.
All the other people that speak are not on that.
Mill Foil, about Bob Leonard.
It's not on the committee. So if you folks like.
He's the representative of and speaker.
I've never, so this goes to
Housekeeper.
the procedure for, if he's gonna be appointed, there's, there's no appointment paper for him. There was never any official appointment paper.
Yep.
So maybe the board could come up with some ideas for our committee.
How many people were on the original committee?
It was um Luke Bario, um Bob.
Leonard.
Leonard. Um Bill Zeller was really kind of a.
I didn't, I wasn't aware that there was a true committee, I thought they were just managing.
I thought so too.
The state grants.
I have papers for them.
Was it decided at a town meeting to make it a committee?
I'd have to go back and do the research, but I would be happy to do that for you.
Yeah, why don't we check that first to make sure that we're not doing committee paperwork that doesn't need to be done.
Was Nancy Lang on that?
Nancy Lang was on there.
I've already done, shot. Mine was on yourself, the actual side. Okay, I just wanna say uh thank you, this is a lot of busy paperwork, but for the members of public viewing and the members here, but the thing is, uh, thank you for the many volunteers on the committees. Now, say that we do not have enough volunteers in this town. Uh we have vacancies on the committee, uh just say, for example, the planning board, we have no alternates, the planning board could use alternates. Uh there are many other committees which could use alternates and so if you're interested at all, um please stop by the town offices and it's, it'd be a good thing. There's uh, there's always uh work to be done and it's uh, sometimes it's the same people every year, it's good to get uh new faces, sometimes and new ideas. So thank you to all current volunteers, but um we're always seeking more, thank you.
I do need to check on any alternates for the planning board because I didn't see the word alternate in that statute.
I know zoning, yeah, but zoning board, for example, has alternates.
Zoning board has alternates and that's in the statute.
Right. But the thing is, uh, we're always looking for volunteers.
Yes.
Can you check that first so we know?
For.
This is uh planning.
I have an email out, actually I sent a follow-up email out as well to the secretary of state's office, but the gentleman who would normally answer that is tied up in legislative hearings right now, so. Uh one evening, on a previous question, he got back to me at eight o'clock at night, so I, I'm sure he's drowning if he hasn't answered me right now.
Thank you as always to prepare for preparing the late debate.
You're so welcome. Thank you for signing. Might want to put a standard budget on that.
Okay, I'm gonna uh, the next, next thing on the agenda is a segment summer schedule. I would like to, uh, we have a proposal, two proposals prepared by the town administrator, I'd like to just defer any discussion on this to next week after you have a decision to look at it. And we'll be prepared to make a, select a, and all, a change schedule if we have any changes next week. Okay, Dave?
Yep.
All right, town business and one with mailbox items. First item is a, this is, this is a contract which has been approved by the uh planning board. It's a, it's total cost to town of Dunbar is twenty-two fifty, the money's been um in their budget. This is for a circuit rider planning assistance specifically to look at uh policies and procedures in the zoning and planning department. And uh what it's gonna do is we have, we're buying forty hours, it's like buy one, get one free. We get, we buy forty hours, the central regional planning has given us forty hours to, as a, as a complement to that. Normally, central regional planning, we're a member of that, we pay dues, but this is above and beyond what our dues pays. And this will be available to basically, uh to not, to essentially help Donna White in her um overhaul of the paperwork and policies and procedures in that department. It's been, it's recommended by the, the planning board in total. Any questions on this, if you haven't had a chance to read that?
No, I read it and I'm in agreement with it.
Now, I'll give you one example. If you cut the application, we want, there's three items that have to be completely in alignment. What's on the web, what's on the application, and what's in the regulations, and is it disjointed, it's disjointed right now. So I'd like to make a motion that we approve the contract for the circuit rider of twenty-two hundred, two thousand two hundred fifty dollars to be paid by the town department towards this contact, contract.
Yeah, I think it's a no-brainer, Ron, the grant is paying for the other half and uh I think it's a good deal for the town to have that assistance.
So are you seconding that, Dave?
I was second.
Oh, Bob did, okay.
Today's date.
The, the two leads on the contract would be um Donna White will be the lead point, as a town official on the contract. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, gentlemen. Press send to us then.
Good data. This is spring twenty-one ninety.
Okay, um there was a problem with electrical service this week in the building. This one here.
Well, can I just.
Please, lean, if you just.
Bring up the speed.
Yep.
Um so the hot water tank for the building department's um kitchenette area has been replaced and during the course of that installment, um they went to the panel to shut the breaker off and it, the plumber heard the arcing coming from the panel, identified which uh breaker was arcing and pointed it out to me and mentioned that it should be uh addressed sooner than later because it could uh cause an additional drawing on the panel itself. And then uh when I contacted an electrician to come and look at it, he was available and came to look at it within fifteen minutes. Uh he identified it, confirmed that it was a faulty uh breaker, asked that we do not use that section, so it's currently taped off. Um and he will provide us with a blank to insert it into that so that we don't try to use that area again. He also pointed out that the breaker itself is extremely old.
Certain brick blocks.
The whole box and the breakers inside panel are very old and that we should consider budgeting in the near future to replace the panel and upgrade our uh breakers. And that being said, I asked him to look at the second panel that we have in the office, which is located near the bathroom hallway. And when we uncovered the um panel, we observed that there was a lot of rust. Um that he said at some point there must have been some condensation or moisture coming down the metal pipe that leads to the box that caused this corrosion that you can see on that picture that um.
Where is this panel?
That's the one in the middle over there, um and he said they are functional now, but again, after seeing the condition of that, he said that's another one that should be addressed and he gave me a number, he said when I go out to get my prices quotes, I should try to budget a certain dollar amount so that we should try to get that upgraded sooner than later. That has started beeping since the problem with that. And that is owned by Dunbar and Telephone and we have called them to, it's the box way at the top? It's saying that property of Dunbar and Town, uh Dunbar and Telephone and it's a battery backup and it's.
Oh, it's way up there?
Yeah, and I'm not sure if it's associated with the panel.
No, it's, it's, it's a battery backup for the uh fiber optic coming in.
Okay, then it's beeping and we've, I do have a message into them.
Okay.
Lean, I think that these um the panels themselves, the breakers may need to be changed if there was some corrosion, but I think they can be pulled out and this bar cleaned up and then reinstalled without pulling and removing all the wires from the existing panels and putting new panels themselves and so I think that we should get a second.
Opinion?
Yeah, only because when we pull all these wires out of the breakers and then pull them back out of the panel and put a new panel in put them back through, there were some of these wires in parts of this building may be very old and we might be doing them more damage than just replacing the breaker.
Okay.
Because that's an aluminum bar that brings the current down there below, but should roster get, you know, we just need corrosion cleaned off and we'll update the breaker.
Yep.
So I think is, uh, so works, do you wanna get, I think I agree with that, the second opinion will be worthwhile.
Second opinion.
And you have that, uh, you have some names to.
Yeah, we do.
See if we can just do the breakers over, Lean, and.
Well, see what, let's see what the work, the, let's see what someone says, but using that as an alternative, I agree. Okay, continuing on. Concord Grid, our chamber of commerce is updating, a guy booked to grid Concord and they had a they had a challenge in here, in fact, uh, Fred, you may wanna help me out here, the challenge, the Center of New England is being challenged here, maybe.
Right.
Uh but they wanna.
They didn't say it was challenged, right, it's showing that we are the center.
Well, we, we, so it was a discussion within the ranks.
Well, uh this professor, she found somebody did a different, a logarithm.
Yes.
Okay, and by doing that, um they said supposedly the Center of New England's in Maine, but she says that's their best estimate, so to me, it means guess.
Okay.
And I said, if I was not concerned, you proved it to us ten years ago, we're still here.
So basically what that letter is, Dave, is the Chamber of Commerce puts out a newsletter book.
I read, I read your whole email.
Okay, so I thought it would be best to send out an email blast to historians who might add or, or make recommendations. I think we just need to remove the advertising of businesses.
I think we do too, because I read the new list of businesses and even that's not complete, so I think that the businesses are not. But I did like, um, on one of the last emails, there was some updating that could be added here in reference to our historical.
Yeah, yeah, I, I agree with that, yeah.
So any committees, you know, town committees that we could put on here.
Yeah.
And uh I think we ought to.
Maybe take it a little bit.
The thing is, I, the fact that, uh, yeah, this, the uh, we could talk about the byways going through town, like.
Oh, okay, we'll jot it down, we'll just kind of.
But the thing is, we don't have to overcomplicate this, just get a few key things which people.
Right, and that's why I thought that they were trying to focus on, keep it simple, not business related, just uh.
Yeah, this is rich in conservation land, ponds, hiking trails, and eight point seven miles of the general John Stark. Byways of itself.
So they did cover most of it right there.
They did, and they just kept it very general instead of listing the five ponds separately and all that.
Yeah, yeah.
But I'm in agreement with taking the businesses out because we missed just one and we're out of all.
Yeah. All right, this is uh this next item, I came in, the thing is, I had to read it twice, I think Lean told me she read it twice, but this is uh information regarding the lawsuit, I don't wanna go into it in detail, but uh fight with utilities, we have to make sure that we're compliant with the RSA, that if we're going after utility assess, assess, assessments, we have to go after any state land assessments also, and so Lean is doing the research and she's gonna comply with the request. The request is part of our defense in, in fighting this court battle, not leave it at that. It's heavy reading, but the thing is, you, you should probably read that, but.
I did read it already. It's really an updated change to stay made last year on the RSA and it says that we have to, instead of having this RSA in place and relying on it, we have to notify the assessing officer every year.
And it's gotta be.
The poll, and I was glad to find out with contacting Lean that we do do most of this every year for all of the town polls.
But the, the, the new part is to notify the states, which I'll, I've communicated to George that I think we need to add them to our list and then make it a regular recurring request every year.
I think some towns rely on that RSA, Mike, and they don't notify their assessing officer like we're doing every year. So that, that would be a much bigger challenge for those towns that don't do it.
And but the thing is, we have to make sure that when we sign poll licenses and stuff like that, the language is inserted, which it has been.
Right.
But the thing is, you know, rather than signing anything just freely, just, no, we just gave it a, a conglourge.
Right, so, and, and that's the concern is that you have a turnover of individuals who don't, you know, that are presented with information that they have to sign, don't always understand, so I actually, at the time in two thousand thirteen, we went over the templates and the forms that we wanted to use and I asked Linda for two um examples of what she'd given out and you can see here, the ones that you've signed have the RSA and the one that she, she, that you're not required to sign has the RSA, so we are compliant. So we're doing it on both sides, um it's just important that we don't lose that whole process and that where they're asking us to enhance it a little bit more by including the state, more power for us to be able to defend ourselves when it comes to uh being compliant.
Okay, thank you. So you'll get that out this week? Okay, two days. Okay, uh this is the, uh, this is an informational, I should have this earlier, we, we got, we made an inquiry last day, last year about the ex-official alternate.
Yeah.
And the thing is, uh.
So we'll have to check if there's no alternates, we may need to keep that as a coach here on that board or some other word.
Right.
We'll check that next week.
Next week.
So we'll put that on the.
That's on the agenda for next week. Okay, there's a public hearing on Monday. Okay, there's a, uh, public hearing on Monday, oh, there was a public hearing Monday, March eighteen.
Yeah, we got it, the same day, a public hearing, about two hours after.
Well, this is for the, uh, Mobergh County, um, finding, yeah, okay. That's, it'll be...
Oh, that's, um, something I read on our email, too.
Are we on any, uh...
Want me to address that?
Yeah, if you already read that, red list is, they're red.
Well, we got his recommendations back, um... Oh, this might not be the same thing.
No, this is...
I was talking about, I was talking about Paige's Corner.
Oh, no, 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 I know.
Because it was from DOTs.
Okay. It looks like, uh, Lena, did you see this at all? Are any of our bridges on the, on the red list?
No, we are not.
Okay.
They're all...
That was both bridges, I was speaking at the corner, right?
Okay. Um, Mr. Mr. Mike Guyney sends us some concerns about, um, Kelsey Road having ruts. I think it's, I think we've got a problem across the entire town of dirt roads having ruts and mud problems. I think, uh, Jeff Crosby and his crew of one have been doing a great job of addressing it, and, uh, I'd just like to say they've been out working on, on Saturday evenings at nine to ten o'clock at night trying to make sure they're passable. So kudos to the town, but the thing is, uh, we're not alone. This is across the entire state having problems with Mike.
Yeah, I'd like to commend our, uh, our highway department for, you know, take care. I took a drive around, and he, uh, put some crushed gravel and some, some rocks and stone on a lot of our dirt roads, and it really helped him out, so...
Yeah, there's just... Okay. I'm almost done. I am done with the inbox. We do have a non-public this evening. We've been doing some, uh, hiring, I believe. We want to discuss, uh, applications.
Your public comment?
I don't, I, I will, uh, open up the public comment again, Fred, this time, so, thank you. Leo? Did you get, Fred, you guys winning already?
Yes.
Okay, very good.
I get double my pay.
Double your pay. All right. Bring it back to the board, I'll start with Dave, go ahead.
Um, I wanted to review, um, you guys must have read the report back from Chris Remlatt that he forwarded to us in reference to, um, Paige's Corner.
Yeah. Want to talk about that for a minute?
Yeah, just a quick discussion on it. No, no action needs to be done by us, but I was surprised to see that most of our recommendations as a town went to the state, and, uh, I want to say that our recommendations as a town were somewhat discounted because they didn't think that they would solve the problem. Um, they did say that, you know, the flashing sign with the speed limit on it could be something that they would help us as a town to set up, but the town would own it and maintain it. We've already worked on that, so I think that that's underway. The additional signage, they thought, would make it too complicated, so it sounds like they want to leave the rest of that pretty much as status quo until it's, goes to the next step to fix the hole.
And as I've correlated that, I met, Mike Tariff came in to the planning board, and we are on the list for the, in the, for the ten-year plan.
Right.
Um, and that's a work in progress. Uh, he said it's important that we address it in the master plan, and so he's in, actually recommended that we insert it into the master plan to give ammunition for, uh, this, a long-term plan. It's, uh, it could be anywhere from, uh, six to twenty years. It depends where we can be shoved, higher priority, lower priority. And unfortunately, the, uh, what determines priority are, uh, major fatalities.
They're going to double-check the remainder of our signs out there, but the ones that are in place that talk about the intersections all meet their criteria right now for that intersection. And they said as far as lighting the intersection, they didn't recommend it at this time. There was only one crash in the evening that they could, in their timeframe that they looked at, so...
And what was unfortunate, they don't count near misses.
Yeah, so, anyway, I just want to give that feedback to the public and, uh, and, you know, report back to them.
So Leo has a question on it?
Good, Leo?
I got a comment this time. I, coming up from the recycling center this week, I noticed when you stop at that stop sign, you really can't read that second sign underneath it, says oncoming traffic will not stop. So that sign is useless.
Yeah, they, they are coming back out to review the smaller signs they did say, so...
I've been to another town in the state, and they have the same type of a signs, but they're bigger. And I've been also to another small town, and they have LED lights right around the stop sign. It would only flash when some car approached, to, to, to get your attention, so...
I'll tell you what we'll do, Fred, is we'll, uh, talk with Chris Remlatt about the larger signs, saying the same thing, but maybe being slightly larger, and maybe we'll respond back and have a, make sure to take a look at that. Same, same as yours.
I agree, but by the time you realize you're upon it, it's so difficult to read.
It's back there.
Yeah.
So we'll, uh, we'll, we'll definitely send that suggestion along, and we'll send it through Chris and see if he can, you know, respond to them. Okay, Lena asked if we want to put, you want to put the whole letter on topics, is that what you were thinking?
Yeah, we have, put the, uh, other...
Yeah, I don't mind, I guess.
I mean, that might spark some interest of the people who are concerned to reach out to DOT and, you know, they're...
Yeah, I don't know, is they going to listen to the general public more than they did at that informational meeting we already had before, right?
No, it's a consensus, but I have a problem with Bob, you mean?
No, I don't, I don't think it'll hurt, you know?
There's nothing to hide in there.
Just a little more information.
State's response.
Squeaky wheel, you know, that they can listen to.
Yeah. Okay. Anything else about you?
No, I'm pretty much set, and although I, you know, I noticed today the governor's talking about giving money back to communities for projects, and I don't know if there are projects that are ready, projects that are going to be moving forward or whatever. So I'm just wondering what process they're in. Are they reaching out to find out from communities what they have going on? They were supposed to return a hundred and something, hundred sixty-two million dollars in the next three years for the communities.
So you still, it's not clear notice?
He did, he did the, uh, PR today of, of the thing, but I'm just curious as to, is, do they have to be as, in the past, you had to have shovel ready or projects that were ready to go, and I'm just curious if... No, I don't know, if they do do it, I don't think we should be sitting back and not at least trying to take advantage of it. If they don't do it, they don't do it, but, yeah.
Okay.
Any other?
That's it.
Okay, I'm going to reserve mine. Lena, anything from the group, from the town administrator's side?
Just, I don't think we touched on this, but, um, this week, it was brought to my attention that we lost one piece of slate off the backside of the building, the library. Uh, so I reached out to the install, the, the contractor that was awarded the, the job. He did respond, saying that someone would be out there within the next couple of days. Someone was here today. Um, they did get up there to re-infasten that one piece that was missing, but I, I sent, um, Mike Cummings out there to, um, talk, to, to show them the slate piece, and then to take a quick look around the building to make sure that there wasn't something else that they were not, um, addressing. And Mike observed what looked like nails coming up from the slate pieces themselves, so, um, the gentleman said that he would, wouldn't be able to do it today, but they would return within a couple of weeks with a lift. So I reiterated that discussion that Mike had with his workers to the owner again, to, you know, to clarify that, yes, he agrees, he will have someone out here to look at that.
And just, just putting a question out there, shouldn't the nail holes be covered by the slate on top of them?
I don't know how it...
So it shouldn't have the nails exposed?
Right, because your nail coming up that you can see means it's leaking.
Yeah.
That's what I mean, where they were nailed improperly at the beginning.
Right, but I mean, if they're in between the slate, it means it's probably leaking.
Well, what did you think when you saw that slate, that piece that came out?
The one that's in your office?
Yes.
Doesn't look like it was nailed.
So he's thinking that it was laid down and never got the nails in, because it doesn't look like it was worn in that area.
There's no wear at all, there's no larger hole.
Was being held with the top slate, but it just eventually slid out.
I guess I'll stop by and look at it as well, because we will make sure...
But yet, you still have nails sticking out.
I don't know if that's, he says he's not sure what he's seeing up there, but he wants them to go around and inspect it. Seems that we've lost one in, in just over two years.
Where is the one that is in your office?
It's in my office on the table.
How did they reinstall it? They didn't reinstall it?
Uh, yeah, they did. I don't know how they did it, but...
How can they, if it's in your office?
Yeah, if you're in your office, that's not getting out.
Well, they took another piece and put it up there, because I didn't want to give them my piece, just so that...
Where, where'd they find the new, the new one?
They obviously brought some with him, with them, but...
It, uh, it behooves him to take care of it, because he gave us a ten-year warranty.
Well, I'm, I'm taking color-wise, because they fade, Lena, we should give them the old piece if it's not broken to put back up. Instead of having a shiny new one.
It's got a chip on that, so, do you think that would make a difference?
Not at this point, it's just too, still too early.
Yeah, it's still pretty early, but...
Hill Brown, anyway.
Okay, well, we just, we'll wait for, uh, fill in eleven with that one.
I'm amazed that fell to the ground, didn't break.
No kidding, it, it corners chip, that's it, and it was...
It probably fell in the snow.
It probably fell in the snow.
And then the snow melted, and then they noticed that the...
Okay.
Well, it's probably came down when the snow load came down.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay. I'm bringing back to me, and ladies and gentlemen, I'm ready to, uh, go to the non-public, and I make a motion that the Dunbarton Board Segment will a non-public session at this time for RSA ninety-one colon, alpha dash three, Roman numer two. Kaminsky, yes?
Well, I second it first.
What paragraph, Miss?